Be best to work it and coordinate it through his office.
Okay.
If that's what counsel wishes unless one wants to do it, but.
Councilman Dinkfelder, was your motion if you want to handle that?
I couldn't hear you, Mr. Shabbat.
Oh, that's because I don't, I have to get used to taking the mask off. Um, I did have a chance to speak, was it Dr. Holt, was it? Um, he unfortunately did have to leave. He had the EPG to take care of and he was not able to stay. And he apologized to me for that and I apologized to him for having, um, the delay. Um, so my suggestion would be that, um, was it your motion, Councilman Dinkfelder? Maybe coordinate it with him with your office and bring it back when you know of a date.
Well, I'd rather be sooner than later in light of the subject matter, which is COVID.
If you want to.
So I don't mind putting it on if he can't do it again, it can't do it again, but I'd rather just.
Next regular meeting.
I'd rather put it on the next.
Your next regular meeting is, um, and I'll remind counsel that August 6th is tentatively scheduled for the mayor's budget presentation. How long that runs, I cannot tell you.
Next regular meeting is July?
July, no, the next regular meeting, oh, excuse me, that's August 6th. Where am I? I'm living in the future.
Fifteenth.
That happens, oh, the July, the July 16th.
Sixteenth.
You have a 10-minute presentation scheduled from Judy Leacy at, uh, from the Stras Center. And, um, and that's at nine o'clock and that's the only other.
Okay, I'd like to carry over item two to the, to the 16th. Uh, we'll just call it 9:00 AM and see what happens.
All right, we have motion from Councilman Dinkfelder to reschedule with the second from Councilman Miranda on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ms. Carol Post, who has her presentation that was moved up.
Good afternoon. Carol Post, Administrator for Development and Economic Opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you and present this report. And I appreciate the opportunity as well to have it done virtually. Uh, the presenter of the report is the gentleman who performed the engagement on behalf of the city. And he is in New York City, so we all thought it much better served for him to appear virtually. So as they get him booted up and ready, I just wanted to, um, provide a little bit of background and refresh. Um, first of all, to know that what you'll hear this morning, or I guess we're now in the afternoon, is, um, is a summary report. We'll keep it brief. I know it's already been a long day, but the submission includes the full detailed report. And that report provides a summary of the information that, uh, and findings as well as recommendations, many of which are underway and in process. There are also some exhibits that demonstrate the activities that are underway and what phase we are in them. We're very attuned to being accountable to, uh, to execute on our plans. And so you'll see some of that in the report. And that report will get posted online as soon as we're concluded here today, so that will be available to the public. Um, in addition, I do want to acknowledge and recognize the full team at Development Services, the Construction Services Team and the PDDC Team and all of the groups that were involved in this engagement. That group has been through a, an enormous amount of change, literally from the beginning of the summer when we implemented the Development Services Advisory Committee. And, uh, the much, the, the, the amount of work that was invested in helping that committee drive through their meetings and recommendations. And then there was a subsequent leadership change that resulted. Um, I was brought on board in February and the group throughout has consistently demonstrated commitment, professionalism and dedication to their job and delivering the services. And even now during COVID, as I've referenced before, this group that drives one of our more vital economic drivers um, across the city is operating remotely and providing those services almost seamlessly uh, from their, from their homes. So a real recognition to them, uh, as the, uh, as the subject of this engagement. And as we go ahead and get Mr. Lamondry booted up, he will introduce himself, provide a little bit of background. I know that some of you all met with him prior to the engagement starting. And as myself, the, the key areas that we were focused on was to make it easier to do business in the city. And in terms of building and development and growth while still recognizing our commitment to the integrity of the building process and the importance of our regulatory mission. So that is an unending, uh, never-ending balance that we have to strike. Uh, but we do find it incredibly important to have a, um, a very active streamlined process for people to, to navigate our systems. And, um, and I think we've come a long way in doing that. So I will invite Mr. Lamondry to our virtual, uh, screen and, um, turn this over to him to walk you through his findings, recommendations and observations. And then we'd both be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Post. Um, thank you, Councilor Lamondry, for today. I'll make a brief, um, if we could go to slide three. Just to give you the background on the next slide, my name is Rob Lamondry. Um, I am the Senior Principal of the Public Policy Paris. Um, I have over 30 years of experience in building construction. Uh, entities including the Columbia University, John S. LaSalle, Real Estate Management Services Firm in the City of New York. And as, um, the Commissioner of the Buildings Department of the City of New York, private contractor, major plumber, I can tell you that, um, I've seen a lot. Um, I've collaborated with many of the jurisdictions across the country while I was there. And, um, I'm going to tell you that, um, at the end of the day, um, we all have similar struggles. Um, and Tampa is no different. Uh, every city, every city has these similar struggles. Um, certainly they're a little bit different depending on buildings, uh, climate, however, that's always the case. On the next slide, I have to tell you that what I experienced in New York, able to experience in here is a whole commitment from now on, the mayor's office, the mayor herself and Chief of Staff in this post. But this push to make it easier to do business in Tampa is really vital to New York growth. And they understand that and they are very hands-on. Um, and I experienced that while I was here. On the next slide, to remind you, uh, you know, my goal was to be part of the department, to be an active management leader, to work with hand in hand with those. Taking the advisory report and making it, um, you know, what I would call chunking it or making it real in the sense of actually creating tasks that line up correctly so that you can hold people accountable and deliver those services, um, more efficiently and effectively. And we did that and when meeting with people, what I found often was it's a good department or you have some really great people, but at the end of the day, um, the delivery wasn't getting done. So it was good sometimes, not good all the time, and certainly not great. And so on the next slide, I have my observations highlighted. Of course, there's a whole report, but, um, it is true, um, to this post, yeah, and we do have that it took a hard work to staff. Although suffering hormones and vacancies, they really have, they really want to do the best for the city. And many of them have been lifelong left with it. And this holds true for many other agencies and there's no doubt. Um, there are limited collaboration opportunities and I'll, I'll, I'll do a bit, but you do have a good soft infrastructure. That infrastructure that was put in place, um, years ago, still needs to be built out, but it really is the wave of the future when you are on par with other cities. Um, and, you know, I'll talk about, you know, the process and some of the other items that are on the presentation. If you flip to the next slide, um, really, I met a number of stakeholders that was inside the agency, outside the agency, um, and I identified these almost 100 tasks. I lined them up specifically with the mayor's advisory report recommendations. And each one of those is a street task. And as you implement those tasks, you should be able to quantify and see the results. Um, I think of it more like if you run a meal. So if you were going to make a recommendation, go have dinner somewhere or lunch. And think about it to say, oh, the food is really good. But that can't be the only thing. So you wouldn't say, oh yeah, it's a good restaurant, but so you want to send your friends to a great restaurant in New York. The great restaurant is not just about the food, it's about the experience. And so it has to be the whole package for you. Um, and if it's the whole package for you all the time, when you make the referral, you say it's a great restaurant and you feel very confident. And if something doesn't go right, you normally would say, not that we reveal because of. And that's what. Great. Uh, it's not just to observe people. You want a whole. And so in order to do that and to deliver that vision, you really need to innovate, collaborate and deliver. And on the next slide, you know, I'll talk about some of the items that really need to happen. And some of them are in place already. Um, when I was there, we, we sort of started to develop programs and we had a methodology that we had to follow. And we laid that methodology out and basically trained the department to explain to them how to quantify what the problem was, how to quantify what the solution was, how to try to figure out how to make it work. And then make sure you have the resources, the backing of the executive staff, and then move it forward. And that's not enough. When you're done, you have to go back and you have to check to see if you actually solved the problem and that there's some sort of quality assurance of unfulfillment. And we have put some of those pieces in place already and some of the tasks that will party want all of that direction. And it is a whole set of things because what you have to remember is a small organization like this, a hundred people, and sometimes they cope in many different directions. So you have to stay tuned to the process and you have to make sure that when you leave, after you fix something, that it stays in place. And that's all about the quality assurance work. And of course, communication standards, utilizing other parts of the agencies, making sure that you communicate with your staff and to the public in the same manner so that everyone's on the same page is really important. And of course, to mention some of the problems, but this second. Go to the next slide. Building for Tampa, what I did find specifically was there were lots of opportunities that, you know, we need collaboration for within the agency and with other professional organizations and contractors and engineers. I will tell you that, and we know this, putting a building on a parcel is only just a part of the solution. You have to make sure the site works. You have to make sure the site doesn't interrupt the sites around it. It has to plug into the infrastructure. All of those other decisions, they can get, they can have complications. Think about this standard process. And this Ohio's got as an example, that in three days, when I was there, this came to light so quickly. The difference between making sure that you can hold on to a tree, the stormwater worked, the driveway worked, and then you can absolutely place the building. These are struggles that developers have every day. They need to clear precise direction, consistent direction. And when they get an answer from the city, other city agencies have all fallen in line. So this is one of those areas where an escalation protocol is put in place. And this is something that Tampa will continue to work on and make sure that we can deliver an answer as what once, not several agencies competing to maintain their particular co-responsibilities. Another example was modifying planning functions. You have a very small group of inspectors, they're really talented. And in order to make them most effective, you need to keep them out in the field and take away the administrative functions and have all of them. And we started to do that while I was there. On the next slide, in progress today, while I was there, um, alongside, um, several of the leaders within the departments and with Carol Post, as we implemented, uh, when we introduced the private provider program, this is something that's by heart to make sure that Tampa moves forward in the right direction according to the state requirements, but also to make it easier to build in Tampa. Um, we introduced the self-certification armarist program. Again, another way to expand. Cities cannot hire for the large amount of work that needs to get done. What they do is they have staff to manage the day-to-day and then they rely on professionals to make sure that they're all covered and standard. And it is the regulator's responsibility to check in and make sure that they're doing that on a regular basis and wholly founded or not. And that is, you as a regulator, you can do that and realize that you can't touch everything all the time and you have to have this process in place and we do that. Um, and of course, the fast pass program, making, they sell public workshops. This is a way to invite the public to understand how to use the software systems with the most. On the next slide, this is probably the most important feeling. We started to do, do, and do this in the report. This was early stages of us pushing each of the unit heads to start to describe each of their metrics. The metrics, although managed, uh, in a very manual way on the next slide, they didn't really have the ability to get the end-to-end results. So you can imagine that if seven things have to occur in order to get one result on the customer, you may not care about the seven individual items that come on there. You only care about the result. And so really, the staff struggles because they don't have automatic ways to pull data, to dump it and to massage it into a dashboard, um, like other cities. And that's something that I know is a subset to a larger, uh, program that this post is working on. But this will continually lead to two things. One is, is the staff will be able to manage their jobs better. They'll also be able to transmit to the public a prime of an expectation. And whether they're going to fit in that or not. Because as a developer, all you need to know is what time, how much time do I need? It's not always about, it has to be done tomorrow. They just want to make sure that they can plan it in advance. And that is the key. If you can predict how long something's going to take as a developer and you can rely on it, then all of a sudden you become a developer in the city of Tampa that says, I don't, I like working here in Tampa. I certainly don't like working in some other county anymore, but I like working here. Why? Because it's transparent, because I, I know what to expect and I know how long that will take. So on the next slide, you know, I really feel you have the building blocks in place. You must continue to collaborate with the industry, uh, for success and secure this one city approach development regard with the agency. Certainly two of them that I had interfaced with the climbing room and the construction services group division. These are the two main pillars, but you have to go outside of those rooms for other pieces to make that one city approach to the people and they're getting it done in this whole system map. So, um, this is the way I think you go through in the report. In the city, there are things of items that are itemized. The itemization of those has to be consistently prioritized based on the requirements. But at the end of the day, the quality assurance program that's been in place, you will be able to make Tampa one of those places where it all goes, new business people say, I like working here. And that's my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Post, anything else or I'll take questions from the board?
I think we can go to questions. Thank you.
All right, question from the board, Councilman Dinkfelder.
Um, in, in your initial, um, discussion, did you talk about the, any proposals that were coming down the pike as related to the code or anything like that? Or when does that come up?
Uh, good question around the, um, the land development code. In fact, you'll find within the Development Services Advisory Report, there is, there are a specific set of recommendations around, uh, modifications or proposed amendments to the land development code, both to update and reform some areas that have become obsolete as well as to align it with other areas of, uh, interest and priorities across the city. In fact, you'll see that same chapter with a little bit of a different bend in both the Transportation Advisory Report and the Affordable Housing Advisory Report. So in all cases, the idea of bringing the code both to a more modern state and to a state that aligns with our mission and vision, uh, was consistent. And so for this particular report, and what we've done is brought those all together. Uh, my colleague Andrea Zelman, who's here with me, is, um, commandeering that element of it. And we've begun to, uh, tailor through what, how, how can we address that? It's a fairly substantial list and we don't want to, um, I mean, each thing will, will have a fair amount of, um, measured approach to it. And there is an outreach component as well. So I think in the, probably in the next 60 days or so, you will see, um, step one, which are, uh, code sections that have proven to either be obsolete, have not kept pace just from a modern approach to how we do business, or also are consistently tripwires that, um, that the community has found slight or minor amendments to could certainly ease the path. And then we'll continue to progress with that over time. And we probably have about three or four phases as we get more and more complex. Um, and they're not as, uh, they're not as, um, uh, easy to approach, but that is a fundamental part of the changes that lie ahead of us is, is carrying that LDC current to meet our, our vision and our strategy.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, just follow-on question. So clearly the, what you all have done in terms of reorganization over at Development Service Center, um, procedures, processes, that's all administrative. That's totally, you know, within your purview and, and really nothing that we control through the code or in any other way, and that's all fine and good. But in terms of the code changes, um, and I think Ms. Zelman and I have discussed this briefly, but, but I think it's really important at each phase that you come to council sooner than later. Um, in other words, I know you want to dog and pony this out into the community and talk to the development community, that sort of thing. Sometimes in the past, uh, other administrations have done that and then brought the final product to council and then we still, and then council still has to wrestle with it, uh, which I don't think is a good sequence. So, um, what I would urge you to do, and I'll be glad to participate with anybody else in terms of, uh, you know, scheduling, is to workshop it with us in small increments. Like you say, phase, phase at a time is probably a good idea, but really come to us sooner than later.
I appreciate that. I, I think that is fully our intent, that clearly any changes to the code come to this body and you are the decision makers around that. Uh, and so I think that that would be, um, our plan and certainly wise to, uh, approach that sooner rather than later and in a sequence that makes sense and ensures that we all are on the, on the same alignment.
And that's in everybody's best interest because the worst thing to do is spend everybody's time, yours and the community's and everything else, and they say yay, and then come over here and all of a sudden we say nay. And that doesn't do anybody any good, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank Ms. Post and Chief of Staff, the mayor, for, um, bringing professionalism like this and really studying the processes and the, and the procedures. I just wanted to ask the consultant a question real fast. Over the last year, but last few years, I've heard a lot of homeowners residents say that, um, they felt like this department, before Ms. Post took over, but this department, um, favored developers instead of individual homeowners. Um, and so my first part of my question is, uh, to the consultant, did you find that? And how do, how did you address it? And number two is that when I met with the development community, and I think the mayor heard this too when she was running, uh, the development community felt like three or four developers got lots of attention and subsidies and everybody else got nothing. And so I wonder, you know, there were, there were words thrown out like arbitrary and, um, some of the words that were mentioned this morning in public comment. But, um, wondering, um, through these new processes, were you able to, uh, undo that? And did you still find any of it existing, um, when you started?
Um, yeah, yeah, so let me take it in two pieces. So the first is, this is not new, like every other city agency across the country that is a regulator of construction, um, has to balance this idea of being regulator, um, but also being someone that, um, is so developed. And so what I found, and I'll, and I'll, you know, to use, um, to use a particular part of the agency is, is our conversation piece, is that when you don't have standards across the board of what to expect and how to respond, you get this, um, disjointed, uh, response. So for example, if someone calls in about, about someone cutting down a tree, and this unknown, it's very, very, um, very weird to most people in Tampa. You know, you need to have a mechanism that has a standard process and an escalation protocol so that if it occurs, one, it's not who called, it's what is the result and why. So in other words, what's the severity? What are we talking about? And then it goes through. So if someone happens to not be in the office tomorrow and the phone call comes in and that escalation or a call is followed, no matter who's in the office. I think the idea is to routinize these things to the point where it's not really a question about who called or why they called. It's what did they call for? And did you get the right information to make a discernible decision? And what is our decision of how to respond to that at any point? So you have to resolve the phrase, uh, community, just like you have to, um, to resolve the phrase from the developing community. So you have to routinize things and make them transparent. And telling you makes a huge difference. So as you, as you work and as the company changes, communicating out what the information is is very important. And then communicating out what the response level is depending on what people are calling for and bringing them, and telling what to expect is the response is most important.
And if I can add to that, I think it's an excellent question and it is something that you find in buildings departments is inherent. Often the squeakiest wheel gets the grease. It's just the nature of the beast, but that is not what we wanted to be the case for our department. I don't think anyone does, but the seasoned developer will be able to find their way through. They will know how to navigate and get where they need to be. It is the mom and pop, uh, business or the homeowner that often gets stuck and struggled. And Bob mentioned it upon, uh, one of the slides there. I don't know how difficult it is to retrace those slides, but the first half dozen things we did right out of the gate were specifically focused on helping the small business and the homeowner. And you'll see it in, we did some web improvements that made this, the website much easier to navigate from a user's perspective. We changed the homepage of the Acela system. As Bob mentioned, it's a state-of-the-art system. It's one of the best in the world for navigating a building department. But sometimes it can be complicated if you don't know it. We made some changes right out of the gate to make that easier because you don't have to be a registered user. You don't have to be a contractor or a developer. Any member of the public can go online and do searches and make inquiries using that system. It's a tool for everyone to use. It wasn't that clear from our website that that was the case. It looked like you had to register and we pushed that to the side and basically had like a Google component to it that says, what can we help you with? And really saw a lot of, um, traction with that. And in addition, we introduced Homeowners Night, which is an evening hours program exclusively for, uh, individuals or business owners that have smaller scale projects. And they can come in on that night, they can meet with plant examiners or technical reviewers. The first night we, we came in, someone came through their, they were an attorney. They never had time during the day and they came in, it was from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and they went through and they walked out with their permit in hand. And it was just a really refreshing experience. Um, so those kinds of things. We also have, uh, training sessions available that are done monthly. Again, geared toward the smaller developers or even the homeowners. So I, I'd like, I'd like to think that we are very much trying to balance the demands that we have across our spectrum. The big developers are our clients as well and they should and afford great service, but that doesn't mean it's at the expense of small businesses or homeowners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? No, thank you for the presentation.
Great, thanks very much.
All right, uh, earlier we had requested number eight, uh, be moved up because it's a large amount. Uh, is there anyone to speak about item number eight? I know we had Mr. Roher, Mr. Roher is here. Take it away, sir.
Thank you, council. Good afternoon, I appreciate your patience. Dennis Rojero, Chief Financial Officer. The item you have in front of you is the next big step in our pipes program. I really think it's the culmination of our efforts last September regarding water and wastewater rates and the establishment of base charges. You'll recall, we took those actions in September to set the stage, allowing us to address our 20-year master plans in both water and wastewater. You'll also recall in our discussion that ultimately our intent is to pay for about 46% of these projects with debt service, and about 54% with cash or a paygo. In simplest terms, there's two components to the item. The first component, and it's the largest, is about $345 million, and there's an exhibit, Exhibit A, within your package of six pages and nearly 250 projects throughout the city. The second component is a request to approve some refinancing of existing debt. By taking advantage of market conditions, it's going to allow us to take a little bit of the edge off the debt service payments going forward. If we, if we get your approval on that, as it states, we're going to save about $8 million in net present value. I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to brief each of you. I appreciate your time. We've got Budget Officer here, we've got the Deputy Administrator for Infrastructure, we've got our Financial Advisor and our Bond Counsel here. And I want to take a moment to thank each of them and stress to you all, this has been a really big and, in my view, great team effort on everybody's part. I want to thank them and their teams. In summary, we've, we've laid the groundwork, no pun intended, for a very strong multi-year address of our infrastructure needs that we're behind on, as you know, but this will allow us to catch up and get ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Rojero. You're always working hard for the city, we appreciate it. So you and I chatted a little bit offline about the underwriting process. I'm not that familiar with, you know, with, with the high finance world of bonds and that sort of thing. I am aware that there's underwriters, and I guess in our system, they're, they're needed. But one of the things that jumped out at me was the fact that the underwriting team is making somewhere in the neighborhood about a half a percent in that ballpark, or up to a half percent of the, what is it, 400, potentially $400 million of bonds that we're doing in this, in this item. I think you calculated for me that might come out to as much as $4 million or something like that.
Yes, sir.
So just run down for me and for anybody who's watching how we, how we select those underwriters. It does bother me a little bit that any underwriters are going to make that kind of money off, off the city, but just tell me what the world of underwriting is about and how we go about selecting those. Is that competitive or an RFP process or what?
Certainly. And as you stated, that's a not-to-exceed amount. The, ultimately, what everybody takes away will depend on negotiations, similar issuances, and things like that going forward. This is a negoti, or I'm sorry, this is, yes, this is a negotiated issuance, so as I, I think we responded in the email, we solicited or interviewed up to eight different underwriters for this project. We landed on five, and...
And does we, does we include our advisory, advisory team as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ultimately, of course, the decision is mine, but I didn't do it alone. Again, a great team effort. And looking at three primary criteria, expertise, and not only expertise in what they've done in the past, but expertise in what they've done in relation to the City of Tampa. Have they worked with us before and handled our debt issuances? Do they continue to keep their eye on the City of Tampa and what's going on in the city? So you had expertise, you have local presence. We've landed on a team of underwriters with significant local presence, not only number of employees, but philanthropy and activity within the community. And then, of course, diversity. And after interviewing them, after reviewing their criteria, after going back and forth, asking questions, and of course, in consultation with the team, we've landed on these five.
And they are?
We ranked Bank of America number one and are recommending, recommending them to be our senior underwriter. JP Morgan, number two, and we're recommending them, recommending that they be our co-senior underwriter. And then rounding out the rest of the underwriting team is Citi, Raymond James, and Seabert William Schenk. And I should point out, in a negotiated issuance, this is the team that's going to go out and sell our debt. They are incentivized to do just that, and the fee structure is part of that incentivization.
And in our briefing, you also mentioned that the rate is not necessarily set as of today, that it, that we're delegating the rate setting to the mayor and the administration. How does that process work? And is that part of what the underwriters do to earn that healthy fee?
Yes, sir, it's a great question. As you see in your agenda report, the true interest cost is not to exceed 4.1%. We don't anticipate it's going to be anywhere near that, but I'm sure I don't need to tell you all the volatility in the market. We've established a high ceiling to give us the flexibility. As an example, you know, back in March, when the world turned upside down, I think the first or second week in March, the AAA 30-year rate was a little over 1.3%. Two weeks later, it was a little over two, or 3.3%. That's a 2% swing in a matter of two weeks in a market that views a quarter of a percent as volatile. I mean, we've never seen volatility like this. If I'm not mistaken, right now, the rate is 1.6% or thereabouts. So we don't think it's going to be anywhere near the 4.1%, but we really want to get that flexibility established so we can launch if the timing's right.
Last question, Mr. Chairman. So in light of what you're saying, would it even be wise or prudent for us to, to issue these bonds if, if we're paying, let's say, more than 3%? Or at what point do you pull back the reins and say, no, we're not going to do this right now?
That's a great question, and it's going to depend on...
Because that would cost Brad a lot of money, so...
Yes, it will. It's a great question, and it's going to depend a great deal on what happens between now and when we price the issuance. And I'm making this up, but if we go over for the next couple of weeks and it seems like 4% is going to be great for the next five, 10, 20 years, then we may launch. Again, we don't anticipate you're going to see that swing again like we did in March, but that's going to depend on market factors and what happens really worldwide between now and when we hit the market. I should say, that's another advantage of this underwriting team and the negotiated issuance, is that we can hit the market when we think the time is best, as opposed to a, a set date in the future.
Okay. I lied, Mr. Chairman. One more question. How long, how long a window are we granting you to do this? I mean, I mean, in regard to the issuance, is it, is there any period of time, you know, that, that you would, you know, be able to...
Are you asking about how long the debt issuance is?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying like...
Oh, how long are we giving that ability to do that?
Yeah.
Oh, I see. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Anybody know? Sir?
Looks like I'm seeing one finger go up. I don't know if that means one year or what.
Good afternoon. For the record, Steve Miller with Neighbors, Giblin, Nickerson, Bond Counsel to the City. It's essentially indefinite. However, there are documents that you're approving in this package that at some point they'll become stale, and so your approval really won't matter. So I'd say for several months, and you know, if the market were to go a little haywire between now and when we plan to price, you would have a few months at least for them to be able to see where the market goes. But at some point, some of the information that's in your packet would be stale, and we would have to come back and get your approval again, let you know what's going on.
Okay. I guess we'll all be keeping an eye on the market. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, we'll leave that under Public Works, we'll vote on it when it comes up, which is coming up in just a minute. All right, we go to, we go to Committee Reports. Public Safety Committee, it's Councilmember Citro, items three through six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move to items number three through six.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Dingfelder, item number seven.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of Chairman Goode's, I will move item seven.
Do we have a second? We have a second. A motion from Councilman Dingfelder, a second from Councilmember Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public Works, now we have item number nine, there's a request to be withdrawn, and item number 11 is a substitute, just for clarity. That's you, Councilman Dingfelder, items eight through 24.
I will move item eight and then 10 through 24 with a substitute on number 11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from, a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask, did you, did you withdraw or remove the item from number nine?
Did you mention that? I mentioned it.
Nine is on the agenda, I'll move to strike number nine.
All right. That's a motion to withdraw number nine, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Finance Committee is Councilman Miranda, 25 through 33.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move items 25 through 33.
Second.
And we have that substitute for item number 29, I noticed.
Got it, substitute 29.
Who was the second?
I was.
A second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is Councilmember Carlson, items 34 through 46.
Move items 34 through 46.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have Transportation Committee, Councilman Viera, items 48 through, I'm sorry, 47, 48, and 49.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I hereby move items 47 through 49.
Second.
All right, we have moved from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Carlson.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, thank you so much. I move item 47 and 49. Thank you.
Second.
All right, second from Councilman Dingfelder, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Number 48?
And number 48, a motion to remove that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Dingfelder, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Items number 50 through 52, if I can get a motion to set those for the public hearings, those are going to be August 6th.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And September 3rd. We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So next up, we have our public hearings. They're non-quasi-judicial. Can I get a motion to open items 53 through 63?
So move 53 to 63, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, and a second from Councilmember Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number 53.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. Item number 53 is a second reading for text that was transmitted to the state. It came before you on June 4th. The state has no comment on this, and we would request your approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from council members? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 53?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Miranda, item number 53.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number E 2020-47, AKA 19A 19-13. Move an order presented for second reading and adoption, an order amending the Image 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Establishing Land Use Objective 2.3 and Policy 2.3.2.3.1, to include a health and all policies approach to planning whereby decisions makers consider how plans and policy will impact human health, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Citro. Roll call then.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's? Dingfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode's being absent and Dingfelder being absent at vote.
All right, item number 54.
Jennifer Malone again with your Planning Commission staff. Item number 54 is additional language that we are proposing to add to the comprehensive plan regarding transitional use 24, future land use category. This was also transmitted to the state after your June 4th hearing, and there was no comment on this. Thank you.
All right, any questions from council members? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 54?
Move to close.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number E 2020-47, AKA PA 19-16, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Image 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Land Use Objective 8.13 and Policies 8.13.1 through 8.13.3, to offer additional policy directions for areas currently designated Transitional Use 24, TU 24, and prohibit any expansion of Traditional Use 24, TU 24 category, renumbering existing land use policies 8.13 as 8.14, renumbering existing land use policies 8.14 as 8.15, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Viera, roll call, please.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's? Dingfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode's being absent and Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Item number 55.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. Item number 55 is the Sulphur Springs Park. It's recognizing a portion of the park that did not have the correct future land use to the recreational open space. Again, it was transmitted to the state, and there was no comment on this item.
Are there any questions from council? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 55?
Move to close.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Carlson?
File number PA 19-07E, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at 713 East Bird Street and otherwise known as Sulphur Springs Park, from Community Commercial 35, CC 35, to Recreational Open Space, ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, with a second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote, please.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's? Dingfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode's being absent and Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Item number 56.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. Item number 56 is a small-scale map amendment, so it was not transmitted to the state, but you did hear it on June 4th, and it is back before you for second reading, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 56?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Viera?
Yes, sir. I hereby move item PA 1917, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at 311 North Newport Avenue, from general mixed-use 24, GM 24, to urban mixed-use 60, UMU 60, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, with a second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's? Dingfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, item number fifty-seven.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff, item number fifty-seven is another city of Tampa park that is being recognized as a park on the future land use map, this was transmitted to the state, and there was no comment.
All right, are there any questions? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-seven? Do we have a motion to close?
Move. Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move number fifty-seven, file number PA nineteen dash fourteen A, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at eighteen-twelve North Highland Avenue, and otherwise known as Waterworks Park, from regional mixed-use one-hundred comma RMU one-hundred to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much, yes, sir.
If you indulge me just for a second, just for any folks who are here for the first time, or maybe watching for the first time, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of these are, the designation for public parks was such that they could have been developed at some point, and so the purpose of a lot of these is to try to protect the public parks, just for anybody watching, that's what we're going through.
You are correct, Councilman.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and thank you for, Councilman Bill Carlson, for mentioning that, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention our friend who championed this, Mike Suarez, who used to be a city councilman. This was his idea, and so I just wanted to tag along to Councilman Carlson's wonderful sentiment by mentioning my friend, thank you.
Thank you very much, item number fifty-eight.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff, item number fifty-eight is De Soto Park, which is located in the Palmetto Beach neighborhood, it is also being recognized as a park through the future land use map, it was transmitted to the state with no comments, thank you.
Any questions from council? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number fifty-eight?
Move to close.
Motion from Councilman Citro to close, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Citro, were you up?
I will take it, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. Item agenda number fifty-eight, file number PA nineteen dash fourteen B, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at twenty-six fifteen East Karine Street, and otherwise known as De Soto Park, from recreational open space R slash OS residential thirty-five, R thirty-five, water and light industrial LI to recreational open space R slash OS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
A roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much, item number fifty-nine.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff, item number fifty-nine will recognize as Cypress Point Park out by the airport as a park on the adopted future land use map, it was also transmitted to the state, and there was no comment.
All right, any questions from council? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number fifty-nine?
Move to close. Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Carlson?
File number PA nineteen dash fourteen C, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at fifty-five twenty West Cypress Street, and otherwise known as Cypress Point Park, from Unispl Airport MAP and recreational open space ROS to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, with a second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, item number sixty.
Item number sixty is also a city of Tampa park that is being recognized as a park with the correct recreational open space future land use designation, it was also transmitted to the state, and there was no comment, thank you.
Any questions from council members? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number sixty?
Move to close.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Viera?
Yes, sir, I hereby move ordinance being presented for first, for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending, this is file number PA nineteen dash fourteen D, a file, an ordinance amending the image two thousand forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at forty-one twenty West Mango Avenue, and otherwise known as Bobby Hicks Park, from residential ten R ten and recreational open space ROS to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much, item number sixty-two.
Item number sixty-two, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff, this is Gadsden Park, it's going to recognize the adopted future.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Sixty-one, I'm sorry, sixty-one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did you go to sixty-two? Were you reading sixty-one?
I was actually reading sixty-one, which is Gadsden Park, and I'm sorry, I didn't.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay, so we are on item sixty-one now?
Yes.
Gadsden Park, again, it was transmitted to the state, and there was no comment, thank you.
All right, any questions from council? All right, is there anybody in the public which to speak on number, item number sixty-one? Saying none?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it goes back to Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, sir. Move item number sixty-one, file number PA nineteen dash fourteen E, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at sixty-nine oh-one South McGill Avenue, and otherwise known as Gadsden Park, from residential ten to R ten, residential six to R dash six, and residential open space ROS to residential open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent, Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, item number sixty-two.
Item sixty-two is Reed Park, it is, it was also transmitted to the state, the request is to recognize us as a city of Tampa park on the adopted future land use map, and the state had no comment on this.
All right, any questions? No, anybody in the public wish to speak on item number sixty-two?
Move to close. Second.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, file number PA nineteen dash fourteen F, ordinance be presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at forty-three hundred Riverside Drive, otherwise known as Reed Park, from residential twenty R dash twenty to recreational open space R slash OS, providing for repeal of ordinances of all ordinance in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, item number sixty-three.
Item number sixty-three, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission, last but not least, this is Riverside Park, and, I'm sorry, excuse me, River Crest Park, it is also going to be recognized as a park on the adopted future land use map, it was transmitted to the state, and there was no comment on this, thank you.
All right, any questions from council? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number sixty-three?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Carlson?
File number PA nineteen dash fourteen G, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance amending the image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at forty-eight oh-two North River Boulevard, and otherwise known as River Crest Park, from residential ten R ten to recreational open space ROS to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera? Goos? Dinkfelder? Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goos being absent and Dinkfelder being absent at vote.
All right, can I get a?
Chairman, move to open sixty-four through sixty-six.
Second.
Motion to open hearing sixty-four through sixty-six from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, if you are to speak on items sixty-four, five, or six, please stand to be sworn in. All right, item number sixty-four.
Melanie Callaway, Transportation Planning, I'm here in regards to the brick street removal, just a small portion, this is located at Willow and Cass. You'll see Willow north-south, Cass Street is currently closed, it's under construction.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if Ms. Callaway doesn't, can you use the handheld mic or directly into it, I've received concerns that unless people speak directly into the mic, that people at home can't hear it.
Okay, do you have the microphone there? You do? You have to speak directly in the microphone because it's hard to hear.
Or the handheld mic, I guess we wipe that down.
Okay, there's a handheld one, right there on the electronic, it'll come off, right? Or, there it is, all right.
This is currently under construction, as you know, Cass Street is closed, so there was currently a right-turn slip lane, we call it, that was made out of brick, because Willow is brick, they're just going to remove this small portion here for the project, that's what they're requesting for today, this is a city project that they're doing, PJ Callaway is here, if you have any questions about the project itself.
Any questions from council members? Councilmember Carlson?
We've talked several times about preserving bricks, is it possible to preserve any of those?
I don't believe so, currently, this area, they're going to put in a mast arm for the traffic signals.
Uh, to, to, to take them out and put them in a brick stockpile somewhere?
Yes, absolutely, that's always a part of this, is they always, they are city property, they will be coming back to the city.
All right, any other questions? Nope. All right, who's up for item number sixty-four?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when people state their name for the record, I would appreciate, because we don't have a sign-in sheet, if they could spell their name.
All right.
The last name.
If you would, state your name and spell it for the record, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Benjamin Buckley, last name is B-U-C-K-L-E-Y, and I'm with the West Tampa CAC, and I know this seems like an insignificant amount of brick, but we, we don't want to get a precedent set here and start removing brick, I think it's something that could be replaced also, I think we need to think about saving and building brick streets for the future. When I was a kid, I heard the story of the three little pigs, you all remember, the third pig built the house out of brick, I really love brick, I think it's a really good material, and the other two pigs that bought the hay and the sticks, they just succumbed to some really good salesmen, I think that's what we've done here in the past, we've been sold a lot of asphalt and removed a lot of brick streets, and it takes away from the character of our community. You know, the last paragraph on page fifty of the Strategic Action Plan for the CRA states that preservation, preserving the existing brick streets and historical buildings are priorities in West Tampa, I wanted to point that out, that's in our strategic plan. As a West Tampa community member, I think that's not even far enough, I think we need to think about putting in new brick streets, and here are some reasons why. Clay brick provides traffic calming, clay bricks add historical character, clay bricks increase property value, clay bricks percolate water, and clay bricks feed the roots of trees, clay bricks can easily be relayed, clay bricks outlast asphalt and concrete and look beautiful even through the ages because their color never fades. I personally laid a lot of brick streets in my life as a contractor. The majority of the streets in our city are mundane, the paving material used is asphalt, asphalt is made of refined petroleum and aggregate, recurring sales is a large part of the business, as a note, I remember Cypress Street, I've lived in West Tampa almost forty years, I remember Cypress Street being repaved at least two times in the last twenty-five years, compare that with the Willow Street, which has the original bricks, which may be over a hundred years old, I think that's really good value, a hundred years. Which is less expensive? Tell me, I don't know. If we want to be a job creator, and I think there are better ways to provide social welfare than repaving streets every ten years, I think we can spend our time finding better jobs and not just these welfare jobs for corporations to make more money and repave and repave and repave, and let's look at the environmental impact and the disposal of all the repaving material, it's quite an impact, I don't know what the cost is, but I think environmentally speaking, it's something that we can't defer. Creative accounting is a tool used by many sales programs to gain an advantage over the competition, the advantage is to induce a sale through not mentioning deferred costs, in the case of asphalt versus brick resurfacing, it is, it is not considered as it should be, there are other costs that are not tallied, such as the impact of increased stormwater into our sewers and eventually into our natural estuaries and waterways, we need to look globally at the cost of streets as they make up a great deal of our landscape. We are a great city, and we should continue on that path, great cities begin with great ideas and lead to great decisions, to be great, one must do great things, stop removing brick pavement of our streets, thank you.
Thank you very much. Where is the applicant on this, on this item? No, all right?
Is the applicant a city?
City.
A city, okay, go ahead, sir.
So Carlos Ramirez, C-A-R-L-O-S-R-A-M-I-R-Z, twenty-one oh-three West Carmen. As some of you know, I am involved with the North Heck Park Civic Association, and I'm also the chair of the Infrastructure Subcommittee for the West Tampa Citizen Advisory Board for the West Tampa CRA, I'm also a professional engineer, licensed in Florida, and while roadway design is not my forte, traffic and safety is, because of my background, I am leading the Infrastructure Subcommittee in changes of the overlay, and to help keep the character and charm of West Tampa, ensure we want to keep West Tampa, West Tampa. Interestingly enough, we did a review of the West Tampa overlay, and we felt that brick streets and grand curves were well covered in code, so that was, that is not one of the things we talked about in there, but we did review it, the engineer in me understands the request, we know it's what it's for, I'm actually in agreement with it because it is removing a slip ramp, which is dangerous, cars live in the area, no cars go very quickly through there, but I thought this would be a good time to bring up the benefits of brick streets like Mr. Buckley before me. The biggest issue, the biggest benefit for me is safety, as many of you have traveled in brick streets, you understand they're going fast, very difficult to do on a brick street, this reduces the speed and increases the survival rate of a pedestrian or cyclist who gets hit by a car. Brick streets also increase property values, and as you know, this is a blighted area, we are in the West Tampa CRA, so we need all the charm, and we need all the secret weapons that we have, and the brick street is part of our charm. Like I said, I have no objection with the request, I think it's, it's fine, the size and the nature of the removal is okay, the removal of the slip ramp for the signal, I'm in agreement with, but I just want to urge you, as our representatives on the city council, to keep fighting for brick streets, to not remove them, to not replace them with asphalt, and help us keep West Tampa, West Tampa, thank you.
Thank you very much, anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Can I ask?
Councilman Carlson?
Guys has a staff question, why do we have to move, remove the bricks? Did I miss that?
So we're removing the bricks due to the fact, there's a, there was a slip ramp, right turn lane, means if you were coming down, heading west on Cass, you could use this right turn lane. this right-turn lane to, we call it a slip lane, to go north on Willow. So, these bricks, if removed and you approve it, we are going to actually use it, you can barely see it, but the, these, this right here is the new cycle track extension from CAFs. You currently know we have a cycle track on CAFs. We're going to reuse bricks into these medians, these little areas here. You might see that they're also on the cycle track on other areas of the city too, in the CAFs Street. So, we're removing it because we're removing this entire slip lane.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this slip lane is going to be completely gone.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, can we get any motion to close this public hearing? There's no other questions? Councilman Citro with a motion to close. Second?
Second.
Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Viera, if you wouldn't mind taking this item?
Do I just move the resolution, or? Yeah.
Second.
And before we move, but Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
This all surfaced about twenty-some years ago when the city of Winter Garden, I believe it was Winter Garden, bought a bunch of brick streets, bricks from the city of Tampa that the council didn't know about, and really, very few people know it was a passing-through thing that happened. And from then, the council made, we cannot move, remove bricks unless it comes to this council. They can't sell the bricks, they store them to repair the brick streets that we have now, to maintain them, and to put whatever we can to get them. That's how it is. That's how it was, and that's how it started.
All right, we had a motion from Councilman Viera, would they second from Councilman Citro, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Can I just say, I'm against removing bricks at all, and I agree with the public comments that we should add more brick streets. And if you ever watch these meetings, every time we talk about bricks, I always ask about them, even though we know what the rules are. I just want to make sure that nobody does that again. But hopefully, we'll get to the point where we can find more bricks and make them in more streets. And, and remove the asphalt and put bricks back where they are underneath asphalt now.
All right, thank you very much. Item number sixty-five.
Melanie Callaway, transportation planning. This is actually another brick street removal of a very tiny portion. Just one street south on Carmen, still Willow at Carmen. The reason why this one needs to be removed is because they're developing here, and they're going to need to fix the ADA ramp at that location. It's just a tiny little piece to fix the ADA ramps. Here is an aerial. All right, street view of it, it's just a tiny piece so they can fix the ramps for the new sidewalks going in on that corner.
All right, any questions from council? Nope.
Sorry, one, one que, I don't know if any, if there's an engineer, but that, removing part of the bricks doesn't take away the tension of the bricks, or affect the stability of the rest of them?
No, it does not, because they will have the curbing to still hold it all in place, so that'll all still be fine, the curbing, they'll be, even with the pad ramp, they'll be concrete to solidify the corner, so it shouldn't be compromised in any way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Can I get a mo-
Move close.
Right, go ahead, sir.
Just a moment, Benjamin Buckley, West Tampa CAC. I know this, I haven't seen the site, and I wanted you all to know that the CAC, we didn't get a presentation like this. We didn't know anything about it till, I didn't know anything about it till last week, okay? And so, we're down here late. We, we think we should have been notified, and we would like to be notified of anything that happens like this before it's too late. So, that's, that's one of the reasons we came down here. Thank you.
All right.
Carlos Ramirez. I guess I just had a question. I know the bricks are being removed for the, for the curb. I was just wondering if the granite curb that's in that area, that's going to be preserved as well, or if that's going to be replaced with concrete. Thanks.
I think it's concrete now, isn't it? In that section?
Right, at this location right here, this is concrete curb. Usually, if we do remove, if we need to remove the granite curb in any way, we would, that would also be stockpiled at the city. That's only in certain instances, it's going to not meet code to be able to replace it in that location, and we would replace it with a concrete curb. But we still keep the granite to be able to preserve it for other areas that will need repair and maintenance.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, motion to close?
So move.
Second, motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Carlson, would you like to take this item?
Which one was it again?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay.
To move the resolution.
Yeah, I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Clerk, do you read the vote? No? No, okay. Item number sixty-six.
Mr. Chairman, David Mechanic.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, council members, David Mechanic, three oh five, South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I'm the applicant. I didn't know whether there was a staff report, but what this is, is the current hotel that's on Rocky Point, it just opened up last year, and we had a bonus agreement entered into along with the rezoning in two thousand fifteen. That agreement contemplated us paying for two bus stops at a cost of fifty thousand dollars. And last year, when the project was nearing completion, it was determined that HART didn't want the bus stops because they don't serve the area. So, this amendment to the agreement simply allows us to take that fifty thousand dollar contribution and put it toward the city of Tampa multimodal impact fee. So, the same dollar amount will be contributed to the city, but this is the only, it has to be legally changed in order to allow for that change in the obligation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council members?
Mr. Chair, if I may-
Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mechanic, just because everybody's crying for transportation, much-needed transportation in our area, you have documentation showing that HART has asked not to rebuild these?
Yes, sir.
I, I thank you, Mr. Mechanic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close? Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Citro, would you like to move this resolution?
I'll move the resolution for item-
Second.
It's moved on July sixteen.
That's right. A second public hearing on this will be for July sixteen, twenty twenty, at nine thirty a.m., just for clarification.
Okay, that's my resolu, that's my motion.
Yes, sir. So, we have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that settles the public hearings. Next up, we have item number sixty-eight. We have a, thank you, sir, a memorandum from Mr. Spearman that was sent out. Are there any questions from council members?
No, sir.
All right, can we get a motion to move the resolution?
So move.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman-
Second.
Viera with the second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number sixty-nine, there's a memorandum. Is there any questions, comments from council? No? All right, who would like to move this resolution?
So move.
Motion from Councilman Viera with a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number seventy. It's a two-part, but we'll take them, we'll take them separately. Any questions on this item, a memorandum was sent out? Seeing none, is there a motion to move this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number seventy-one. Is there any, any questions? Also, a memo from this, who would like to move this?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number seventy-two and seventy-three go together, we'll take them apart. Item number seventy-two, any questions? We have the memo there. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
Motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number seventy-three. This goes in conjunction with seventy-two. Any questions from council?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Oh.
Is Citro, Citro.
You know.
Citro.
That's too funny.
All righty. Thank you very much.
He's a caffeine.
Been a long morning.
Yeah, yes, sir. Item number seventy-four, we took care of, correct?
Yeah, and thank you, I forgot to thank you all for encouraging, encouraging that discussion, which ended up working out really well. Thank you.
All right, we have nothing there. Item number seventy-five, there was a memo, there's nothing there. Item number seventy-six, Councilman Goods asked that it be removed from the agenda and placed to July sixteen. Since Councilman Goods is not here, do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Chairman, move to move seventy-six and put it in the July sixteen agenda.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, that settles the agenda. We go to information reports and new business by city council members. Councilmember Viera.
I don't believe I have anything today. I don't believe I do. It was an interesting council meeting, and I, I know no one spoke after, from council after all of our public comment, but I just continue to believe that the most important thing that we can do in the United States of America, including the city of Tampa, is to listen to one another and speak to one another and talk and make common ground whenever we can make common ground. And I know that this is a council, and I, and I speak believing in all of my colleagues up here, that is willing to listen, willing to engage, and willing to act and reach common ground. I think we've done that on a lot of different things, and this city certainly moved forward in a lot of different things. If you look at the holistic changes that Hillsborough County, Tampa, and all the different municipalities here in Hillsborough County agreed to yesterday, are passing body cameras and different things here in the city of Tampa, you know, we're making significant leaps. I think it's our duty as a city to not be as reactive in the future, but instead just be more proactive, I would say, in the future on these type of issues. But I think the most important thing that we can all have, and I, and I stand by this come hell or high water, is that we need to have respect for one another in all instances. I'll, I've said it before and I'll say it again, which is, I'm not here to demonize peaceful protesters. I'm not. As an elected official, I'm here to talk to peaceful protesters. I'm here to engage with peaceful protesters, and similarly, I am not here to demonize law enforcement. I will not do that. We spoke Tuesday about what occurred on Saturday evening, and that is something that I obviously condemn a hundred and ten percent. I know all of us, I would think, join in that. But we're, we're here to talk with one another and to engage with one another, and I know this is a common ground council, and, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Viera. Councilman Viera, Councilman Carlson, do you have any, anything for new business?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Just typing out this. Okay. We heard a lot of things this morning, and I think there, there are many things that we need to respond to. I'll only hit on a few right now. It's very concerning to me that, and I watched the CRB the other day, it's very concerning to me that apparently a woman's personal information was put on the, on a YouTube page for, for the police. And all I know is from listening to the public on this, but I would actually like to make a motion, if you don't, you all don't mind.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that city staff report back to us. Sixteenth is really busy. Anyway, we'll pick a date. Can I make it the sixteenth, or the thirtieth?
It's up to you.
The thirtieth is a virtual workshop.
Yeah, not the thirtieth.
Let's make it, I would like to ask city staff to report back to us on July sixteenth as to the privacy rules related to the police usage of social media and YouTube in regard to people's personal information, and to give us recommendations on how to protect individual privacy.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may inquire, this is going to continue the process that we've had through the state of emergency, that a memo would be prepared, and it would be, it would be a memo in lieu of an appearance unless council wanted it?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay. Then we can make, maybe make a motion. Also, there was a concern this morning about police not wearing masks in close proximity. I don't, I won't make a motion on that, but just a statement that, you know, I think the police need to be protected, and the, and the public needs to be protected. And so, to the, I would just recommend, to the extent that, that police are in close proximity to the public, that, that the mayor or someone consider, you know, giving police proper mask protection. There was also a comment about signs not being allowed in the meeting. I didn't know about that before. Is that a rule?
Yes, sir. It's been consistent rule with city council since long before I've been your city council attorney. That rule has existed. Mr. Miranda could probably affirm that. It has always been the position of city council that to avoid distraction and to allow the meeting to move efficiently, people have the opportunity to be heard, but any visual, and I can read you the rule itself.
You don't have to read the rule. I disagree with that, but I won't, I won't fight that battle if my colleagues aren't interested in it. But also, I think that, and I'll just say this philosophically, not a motion, but I think that, especially when we have a big crowd, we need to make public comment first. We've gone back and forth with different formats over, over time, and, you know, the choice between four people waiting versus a hundred people waiting, we should not make a hundred people wait. And I, I don't think it's anybody's fault, I just think we should set a policy that, that we consistently allow the public to speak first.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. I was going to bring it up under, after everybody spoke, because we've discussed it in regards to this morning and going forward, so.
Yeah. You know, if I was a member of the public and I was stuck out there, I would be angry too. It looks like we're trying to, it doesn't look good. There was a, there was a request from Bishop Patty that we try to move Fair Oaks forward. We had a public meeting on it, we've asked for updates, and I don't see anything moving forward. I'd like to make a motion that staff come back to us on-
You want to do August twentieth?
The twentieth?
That's the, a regular meeting.
August twentieth. I'd like to make a motion that city staff come back to us on August twentieth with a plan to tear down Fair Oaks Community Center and rebuild it to the same standard, to at least the same standard as in other neighborhoods-
Second.
-with property amenities.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson.
May I, and Mr. Min, if, may Mr. Chair, may I say something? You know, I'll, I'll support this, this motion going forward for purposes of a staff report. A couple of thoughts, which is, you know, I'd, I'd want to be briefed by city staff on, on the status of this building, other options. I know people have talked about Al Barnes, and frankly, I'm just being blunt, he's not here. I'd love to hear from the councilman from, from East Tampa, Orlando Goods on this. So, I'll, I'll support it as a courtesy to our friend and colleague, Councilman Carlson. But with those qualifications, it's, for me, more of an inquiry, but if it wants to be pushed forward, I'm, I'm fine with it.
If I, if I can ask for a clarification from the clerk, what was the form of the motion? What did you, what was your direction to the-
I would, I would like to make a motion that staff come back to us on, what was it, August twentieth? August twentieth, with a recommendate, recommended plan for tearing down Fair Oaks Community Center and rebuilding it. It doesn't, my intent is that we're not going to be approving a plan necessarily on that day, but to ask them to look into doing it. There's, mostly the plan on the table has been to renovate it, and the community is angry, naturally so, because it hasn't even been painted, it has rats in it. And, you know, whether some part of the building can be preserved, I don't know, but the community want, we sat in, Citro and Goods and I sat in a meeting with a hundred people who demanded that, that we tear it down. They demanded the mayor tear it down, so I think we need to seriously look at it.
And just a reminder, council, when you get the capital improvement plan, that's your opportunity to scrutinize the priorities for the city for the future.
I'd like, if my colleagues agree, I'd like to just make sure that it is, that it is highlighted, because that is a specific tangible, the community wants action, it's a specific tangible thing that we can show. It's not the, maybe the highest thing for everyone, but at least it's one piece that we can look at.
That you clarified that the intent of the motion is just to come back with a report as to what would be involved in doing that, what would the cost be, what would the timeframe be, you know, the feasibility of it. In other words, I don't know that council can direct the city to do that, but you can certainly ask the city to report on what would be involved in doing it.
Yeah, so in the motion, maybe just the staff come back with a feasibility report.
And again, council, that is the whole purpose of your capital improvement plan. Your capital improvement plan is a five-year plan to set forth construction priorities throughout the city.
And I think to, to Councilman Viera's point, my intention is not to take away from Al Barnes. I think we've already funded it in several different ways. If not, I'm sure we come back to it. And also, I'm sure if our colleague, Mr. Goods was here, that, that he would probably make this motion, so I apologize.
was here, that, that he would probably make this motion. So I apologize if he's watching, but, um, just to move the ball forward.
I, I hope he's healthy and he'll, he'll be here to take part in that discussion. So we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, who seconded it?
I did.
Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, um, um, there's a, the, there was a, a Creative Loafing reporter here, um, that talked about, um, the police public relations office. And Ms. Zelman shut me down if I say it too much, but they, the, the, the public, and I don't know who it is or how, but the public information office put out, um, was either tweeting or on Facebook, um, a couple of weeks ago, mocking the public and, and put a hashtag, get the facts or something like that.
Tell the whole story.
What?
Tell the whole story.
Tell the whole story. I was appalled by that. And I'm, I talked to, um, Chief Bennett immediately, Chief of Staff, and I said, this cannot be allowed. This department needs to be reworked. We have a lot of issues with communication, pe, public saying they're not notified, things like that. But when we have a communication department, I don't know how it's staffed or anything, but when a communication office representing our police department in a, in a, um, a difficult situation like this is mocking the public, that is, 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 um, something we should not allow. We need to restructure that department, replace people or processes, but you, we cannot, we cannot use cutesy hashtags that are used for marketing to try to have difficult conversations with the public. And then, uh, Creative Loafing posted that, uh, Chief Dugan went on, uh, Fox News today and, uh, in, in was giving his side, Fox News National giving his side of an event that happened last week where Creative Loafing is saying that he's not telling the truth. Um, I can tell you, I was very upset a couple of weeks ago because he, uh, did not, in my opinion, accurately represent a conversation that I had with him. And the public, um, you know, you, you all saw the signs when we walked out. The public is demanding that we call for his resignation or, or ask that the mayor fire him. I'm not going to do that right now, but I can tell you that, um, uh, he need, at the very least, he needs better communication advice and he should not be going on national TV, uh, mocking or embarrassing, uh, the public or our city. And his staff, his, uh, PR staff should not be using cutesy hashtags to, to attack the public or belittle the public. We've got to change that attitude. I'll also tell you one other thing. I don't know what the police processes are and I'm looking forward to learning more about them. Uh, but also, when I found out that the public was shot with rubber bullets and even children were hit with whatever chemical was sprayed, I was appalled by that. And I, I told, uh, Chief Bennett immediately that, that I will not tolerate that. I will, I will protest that. I'll stand in the street and let them spray me because I'm not going to allow our residents, especially children, to be shot with something. If there's, if there's actual violence going on, that's one thing, but if it's peaceful protesters, it's not acceptable. Um, the last thing is, um, and that's just my comment for the day, but the last thing is someone called for a, um, a town hall on, um, on, uh, race relations. There are lots of conversations going on, but I think that any kind of communication we can have with the public is good. And, uh, so I would like to make a motion that we ask city staff to study the possibility of organizing a town hall meeting on race relations and to report back with their recommendations on July sixteenth.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, thank you.
And I agree with, with, with what you said. You know, I know it's, uh, very difficult, but, uh, you know, you're not wrong. Councilman Citro, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there was a comment made about our fellow councilman, Councilman Goods, who wasn't here today. Uh, I find that kind of disheartening, especially when, after we were all tested for COVID nineteen, after Councilman Goods had found out he was. He is at home suffering. He's not avoiding the issues. He's not avoiding his duty. He's at home suffering. And brother, I hope you get better soon. Uh, there was also that reporter, again, from Creative Loafing, who was kind enough to ask if any of us had attended the protests. I immediately stood up, but I also want to remind the public that there were other councilmen who attended. Councilman Goods himself, Councilman Viera, Councilman Maniscalco, just to mention a few. We were all there concerned about the citizens of Tampa. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We all need to start using the U-word and that U-word is understanding. Nothing more, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda?
None, sir.
All right, before we move to receive and file, I mean, there's a lot of things that I want to say. This was a very interesting meeting, very different meeting. Uh, the suggestion was made about moving public comment to the beginning. I think that's a great idea. I thought this morning the, um, ceremonial stuff would go quickly. It did not. We had a large crowd of people, people that have taken off of work, people that have sacrificed to make time to come here, people that are very passionate about very important issues. So I think moving forward under, uh, regular council meetings, we take public comment first because out of respect to the people that come to speak, so they can get back to work and, and everything else that they have to do. Um, and it's not right that they wait. You know, we, as was said this morning, we are elected by the people and we serve the people and the people are speaking. And the least we can do or start with is listening. And Councilman Citro said it, the word is understanding. We can only put ourselves in, in other people's shoes so much and try to understand. We don't know what other people experience, but we can be, uh, empathetic, understanding. Uh, we can open our hearts, as one lady said. And, uh, when you, when you mistreat people for a very long pe, a long period of time, you know, eventually things explode and that's where we're at. I didn't think I would see it in my lifetime. Again, I, I've mentioned it in other meetings, I thought this was something of the nineteen sixties. But it's something that is ongoing because real solutions have really never been found. It's a little bit here, a little bit there, but we're really stuck in the same place. Councilman Carlson, you touched on a lot of great points. I think, uh, having that town hall is important. People come here and they get their three minutes and that's one thing, but we need to have real discussions, real discussions with real solutions. And, uh, until we find those solutions, this is just going to continue on. And, you know, the buck should stop here. We should take care of these problems now. Another gentleman mentioned that in the Bible, the word now is mentioned thousands of times. And, uh, and that's where we're at. So, having said that, can I get a motion to receive and follow documents?
So move. Second.
We have a motion from, uh, Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you raised a, a point. Um, is it council's intention, your next regular meeting, um, is on July sixteenth. Is it your intention then that, and, cause we can't do it through the council's rules, it's your intention then to take public comment, is it by unanimous consent of council, that public comment will be heard before your-
I, you know, to clarify, we take public comment first, whether it's three people or a hundred people.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make that motion and I will-
Yeah, if I could, uh, pass the gavel then to Chair Pro Tem Citro, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, move public comment to the beginning of the agenda on the regularly scheduled meetings.
Second.
There's a motion been made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman, uh, Carlson, to move our public comments to the first item after invocation and pledge?
And the appro, and the approval of the agenda.
And the approval of the addendum.
We get right to it.
Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can just follow up on that, um, that would require, and I think what we're going to do is, um, certainly during this pandemic and during the state of emergency we're in, and not necessarily do it now, but eventually we're going to have to amend your rules of procedure. So I'm going to ask the clerk's office if it could be done through, um, um, either a change through the addendum, but in some form or fashion to notify the public, particularly those people who are, are on the list of commendations or presentations that day, that it will come after, uh, public comment, if that's okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
The other question that I have for you before you, um, recess, is to remind council that the thirtieth of July, um, is, uh, now to be the workshop session, is now to be a council virtual session. Council, I noticed on the agenda this morning that there are still the two presentation of commendations. Um, in the virtual environment, they're not going to be heard or be able to be heard that day. So I just don't, don't know whether council wants to take up the issue of when to start back with commendations or how to proceed with them.
Can we discuss it at the, uh, end of the evening meeting, under new business?
If that's when you want to do it.
So we can think about it? I mean, the, the, the thought is out there. Do we take, uh, because of the, uh, thirtieth meeting, we have the, um, those commendations. We'll figure out how we work it, since it's going to be a virtual meeting.
They, they should, they should come off, sir, because I don't believe we are capable of handling the-
Now, what if Councilman Citro, who's the head of-
I was, I, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for asking me. Uh, uh, council, are we looking at, so we have enough time to change the agenda for the thirtieth? Is that your question?
Well, certainly, well, right now, sir, it, council made the motion to go virtual on that for public health reasons and, uh, to be able to accommodate. We also may have, um, um, other issues, but right now, at nine AM, you have the, uh, presentation for Police Officer of the Month and presentation for Firefighter of the Quarter. Um, and again, I'm not even, um, discussing the following month of August, but as of now, under the formal fashion that you've conducted virtual meetings, um, we have not done presentations. Um, and as Ms. Lucas can attest, how difficult it is to conduct a virtual meeting as it is, um, to add that burden. I don't know if staff actually has the capability, frankly, quite frankly.
Then council, may I just go ahead and make a motion that the commendations going to the, uh, men and/or women of both the TPD and fire rescue be postponed to a further date yet to be determined?
If I, if I may-
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that.
And ACLU.
Yeah, and ATU.
And ACLU.
ATU, not ACLU.
I mean-
ACLU.
Yes.
ATU. And, and if I may suggest that maybe we, um, uh, hold them so that we're not so backlog, cause we're looking at months. Um, and that's at least a couple of firefighters, a couple of ATUs, uh, and, uh, and the, uh, uh, police. Um, that maybe we have a couple of them off premises where council members can attend, um, so that we're not so darn backlog, cause this is things that, that we usually do. Uh, and I think it would go well for morale within the city, within all parts of our, uh, workforce here in the City of Tampa, I think. Just my idea.
And that, sir, respectfully, that is something that council can contemplate. The motion now is to postpone the, the ones for the July thirtieth-
July thirtieth until further date.
Virtual session. And I, I heard that the motion would then also include the August sixth ATU until, uh, postponed to a further date, until you can discuss this at a future meeting, how you want to proceed. There are certain, I mean, we could come back with,